Oh, we got there in the end. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for coming to today's meeting of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee. Today's meeting is open to the public and has been webcast. We haven't received any public questions that I am aware of from members of the public by submission of the deadline. Please, can I request that all mobile phones are turned on to silent and other such equipment so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. The agenda and report for today's meeting are available on the council website and paper copies are available in the meeting. There is an agenda reports pack plus one supplementary pack. If I could just go around the room and ask members to introduce themselves. councillor Ross.
Councillor Colin Ross, Lib Dem spokesman on this committee, representing Dorant Tockley Ward.
Councillor Anne Witterco, representing West Ecklesfield Ward.
Green Party councillor Brian Homshaw for Broome Hill and Jarrovale and deputy chair of this committee.
Councillor Peter Garbutt, Nether Edge and Sharrow Wood.
Councillor Mick Rooney, deputy co-chair of this committee and member for Woodhouse, which is now known affectionately as Emergency Ward Woodhouse. Thank you.
Councillor Mary Lee, representing Arnold Wood.
Andrew Jones, Director of Tuned Services.
Sarah Bennett, Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
And I'm councillor Don Dale, the other co-chair of this committee and member for Shire Green and Brightside Ward. It is at this part of the meeting that I would like to remember one of our colleagues and dear friends, councillor Anne Murphy, who we sadly lost at Christmas. I'd like to take a moment's silence if everyone would be all right with that, but I would just like to say that councillor Murphy worked tirelessly for the children and young people in our city, both as a councillor, as a citizen and as a foster carer. She advocated for young people throughout this city and I would just like to take a moment to remember her. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, item number two on the agenda is apologies for absence. Fiona.
We have one apology for absence from councillor Gail Smith.
Thank you. I understand that there is no reason for exclusion of public or press in today's meeting and could I ask whether members wish to declare any interest in any parts of the business on the agenda? If so, please let me know. No? Thank you. Item number five, minutes from the previous meeting, page 11 of the agenda reports pack. Our task now is to approve the minutes from the last meeting. So does everyone have sight of those minutes? So, page one. Well, page 11. Page 12. Page 13. And page 14. Are we all agreed that they are a true record of the last meeting? Thank you, agreed. Item number seven is the work programme. Sorry.
Just as a matter of rising on the minutes on item four, which is the minutes of the previous meeting, councillor Homshaw previously raised with us about the development of Corporate Opportunities Register and that it's one on the work programme. We've taken steps to initiate some work on that and also we will be briefing the committee's leadership, leading members as soon as possible in the next week or so and then we'll be bringing that back to the committee in due course.
Thank you, Andrew. So, agenda item number seven is the work programme. Could we just go through that as well, please?
No problem. So this is the opportunity for you to give me any feedback. You might have the councillors to provide any thoughts and feedback on the work programme as it currently stands. If you look at appendix one on the work programme, you'll see the listed new items and rescheduled items and there are two new items there, the Learn Sheffield decision, which is following a briefing which was given at our last policy committee meeting in December. And as was just referenced there, a standing item has been added from March onwards to look at corporate opportunities. There are a number of rescheduled items, these are only slight modifications so far, and there are a number of items that have been added which we are starting to look forward to the future committees, following our last scheduled committee, which will be at the beginning of March. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona. I would just like to raise that we need some more work put in on the work programme. We've got items which are due to come to the committee in March. They would be the all age mental health strategy, the all age autism strategy and the conversion practice statement, which needs to come through children's as the clue is in the title and they are all age strategies. There we go. Item number eight on the agenda then, please, is school admissions arrangements for the academic year 2024 to 2025. This is page 29 of the agenda reports pack and presenting officer today would be John Bigley.
Good afternoon, thank you. Summarise the item, yeah? Thank you. This is an annual requirement to determine the admission arrangements for community and voluntary controlled schools. They must be determined by the 28th of February, so as I said, it is a statutory requirement. There are any proposed changes to the arrangements from last year for 2324, so these arrangements are for the academic year 2425. We were not required to consult, as you are only required to consult once every seven years unless there are any significant changes, and we did last consult in 2324. So, the other elements to the paper are the statutory coordinated admission arrangements, that just outlines how we liaise with neighbouring authorities and manage the process. And I think I'll stop there. Happy to take any questions, thank you.
Thank you, John. Does anyone have any questions on this report? Okay, so this report contains recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hands. No? So I would like to propose that this report is agreed.
Sorry? They could do, but not often. Why change something that works, councillor Rooney, really? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, item number nine is Budget Monitoring Report, which is page 109 of the agenda reports pack. This will be presented by Jane Willby. The report contains recommendations for approval. Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Jane Willby, I'm head of accounting. I'm bringing this report today to bring the committee up to date with the financial position as at month eight, so that's November numbers. So, the overall position for the council and committees in general and then the specific committee in the final section, overall at month eight, we were reporting an overspend on the Revenue General Fund position of 17.1 million. That was largely in adults, 11.6 million in adults and 6.6 in the Children and Families Committee. A lot of the reasons for the overspend, this is a year to date report, they remain the same, the narrative is the same, because a lot of the reasons for the overspend continue to be non-delivery of the budget implementation plans from the previous year. The report talks about the reserves position that we set aside to sort of manage the financial risk in non-delivery of the savings. When the savings were set out, I think there was recognition that some of them wouldn't be delivered in full in year, so there was a reserve of 70 million to manage that financial risk. Based on what had been allocated in the budget for last year and this year, we currently, and the current outturn position, we've probably got remaining reserves of about 18.2 taking us into next year. The final section really tells you a little bit more about what's happening in the Education, Children and Families Committee. So the overspend of 6.5, which is, sorry, 6.6 million, which has been consistent with the month seven position as well. Again, a lot of the reasons for the overspend is because of the budget implementation plans. There's also been a worsening position in the income for Aldine House, following further delays to the management recruitment, impacting the occupancy capacity there, extra costs in placements alongside other reasons as well. And happy to take any questions, but also glad that there are service colleagues here that may be able to offer further explanations for any reasons for overspend. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Councillor Ross.
Thank you, Jane. Just want to actually go back to the Aldine House and the special needs transport overspend, which are the main reasons for the worsening position in our particular budget. I visited Aldine House last week and pleased to report that new building extension is getting close to completion, but it's worrying that when the manager left, then the four assistant managers also left, which left us seriously understaffed with senior management and therefore having to reduce the capacity, hence the report here. There must be some savings in staffing costs which possibly can be offset against that. So, that's one of my questions, are there possible staffing costs that will offset the savings? And you may not be able to answer the question, but I know that the home is trying to get back up, working towards a fuller capacity too, so it can address the income stream here. But the second sort of set of questions is about the special education needs transport. It's a bit of a perennial problem. And I know we're taking strenuous efforts to reduce the reliance on special needs transport with your training, your travel training and so on. Can you explain, or perhaps another office explained, why there's been this significant worsening in the special needs transport budget of half a million pounds, which is a bit of a concern going forward, because in next year's budget, we're actually seeking to reduce the amount on special needs transport and this rather concerns me that we've not been able to manage it in this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, my colleague here, would like to answer that in further detail.
Thank you, councillor Ross. On special needs transport, overall, we've got about 2,200 children who are actually using that on a daily basis. Part of the reason there's overspend is because of the increase in demand and that has been happening because of Covid, we were relying more on the taxis and the price for fuel was also up last year. As part of over 2324 budget, what we have agreed is to do a end-to-end review of over transport provision and that's what we have started looking at. We will be looking at if we can reduce our reliance on taxis and switch over more towards minibus. We talked about encouraging wherever possible travel training. Then we're also looking at the assessment that is carried out and the award for transport, is there a possibility of doing a policy review on those arrangements? So, next year, the plan is to reduce overspending by £355,000. We still feel that is doable, given the constraints I've highlighted above. It would be a tough ask, but we are committed to actually progressing that and I think what we will do is we'll keep the committee informed as things progress. But again, I think bottom line, the issue is mainly overspending because of the increase in numbers, not because we are overspending on other areas. It is demand plus cost increases on fuel as well as taxi uses.
Just on one of the solutions you've outlined, more use on minibus. Are we confident we have enough capacity in the fleet of minibus? Actually, not so much the buses themselves, but drivers, because I know there are issues with the drivers, to cope with an increase of, you know, more minibus in the mornings and evenings on the special needs transport run?
A good question. Again, I think we just had this discussion on Friday with colleagues in Stanleyford Road. Recruitment of drivers as well as personal assistants is a challenge. However, I think for us to get to the end of that challenge, first we need to establish is if there is scope to increase the use of minibus, how many we need, identify capital investment and then how we work with colleagues in HR to incentivise coming and joining the travel team. Which you're right, that challenge is real, there are insufficient drivers as well as personal assistants available. We will have to work collectively with HR to explore what we can do to incentivise workforce.
Yeah, I'm just flagging him as concerned as we've got increasing demand and one of the solution is predicated on something that's a bit out of our control, drivers and personal assistants, so it does concern me that we've got a saving in next year's budget, which already looks a little bit, I wouldn't say, shall we say, difficult to achieve already at this stage and perhaps we need to review that saving.
Thank you, councillor Ross. Councillor Rooney.
Thank you, Chair. I may have got this completely wrong, Mark, that the figure of 6.5, 6.6 has been more or less the figure of overspend or non-achievement of BIBs since we started talking about budgets this year for next year. Is that right? And if those two figures, those two figures that you're in, that's in on page 113, would add up to another million, taking that to 7.6? So, has there been a million pound saving somewhere else? Have I got, or have I forgotten to add up, have to add up, being away?
I think the 6.6 million pound is this year's overspend. What we are suggesting is out of those 6.6 million pounds, there are two big savings, £2 million related from health and £2 million from Aldine. And what we have done is we have rolled those savings forward in our next year business plan. We have dealt with Aldine saving through other setting proposal, which will go to the full council in March and our working assumption on health is we will resolve that by additional income coming through. All the other existing savings which are delivering an overspend will be resolved in the year or before the start of first of April.
I may have not explained myself very well, Mark. 6.6 or 6.5 was the figure that we started off with and that has been rolling on throughout the year. But if we've got a deterioration in income from Aldine House to Churnham Far Far Million and an overspend of half a million on special education needs transport, surely that bumps that figure up to 7.6, not 6.? Yes or no? And therefore, have we, and given that you're saying we're carrying forward 6.5, have we found another million pound savings somewhere?
I think the answer to that is yes, there's some underspend in staffing forecast that mitigated the overspend this year.
So I was right. I still can add hope, thank you.
I think because there will be small over-underspends throughout the services, that's what would have happened.
I understand that.
Councillor Garbutt.
Thank you. Can you tell me the breakdown of the minibus in this, in this section, between petrol and/or diesel and electric?
I haven't got the information, but I will get that information across to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions on this paper?
Can I just ask quickly, do all children get offered transport? In this situation, all special educational age children, are they all offered transport? Or what percentage have transport?
I think transport is based on the individual child's needs. If the child needs a transport, they would be offered transport and if they don't, I think the parents can actually then drop the child, but it is based on individual child's need.
So what sort of percentage of children tend to require transport then? Is it a high percentage?
So we've got 2,200 children who are eligible for transport, we've got 1,500 children in special schools, so by that token, most of our children who are attending special school will be accessing our transport provision. And then there are other children who are attending, the mainstream schools will also be, again, I can get you a breakdown of that information.
So it's quite high then? Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions on this report? Okay, so this report contains recommendations for approval to the committee to note the council's financial position at the end of November 2022. Are we all agreed? Thank you, everyone agreed. Thank you, Mark, thank you, Jane. Okay, so the next paper on the agenda is item number 10, which is page one of your supplementary reports pack. This is the all-phase mainstream commissioning plan for 2023 to 2026 and the presenting officer today will be Sam Martin. Thank you.
Before we start, can I say that this is a report that is to follow and it's one of three formal decision reports which has to follow here, so it hasn't arrived on our desks in really what I regard as adequate time for us to fully scrutinise this. Now, some committees have actually refused to take papers that are late arriving, not blaming you at all in this situation. It's a point of principle, is that, I'm not saying we reject all these papers, but we must bring these papers forward in adequate time for us all to be able to scrutinise them properly. Thank you.
If you can just bear with me, I'll just double check when the paper actually arrived. It was due to arrive and when it arrived, okay, thanks. For anyone watching out there in the world, we're just checking on some dates for papers. Thank you. Okay, so for the record, the paper should have been published by the 23rd of, we are in January, aren't we, January? The papers were three days late and we received them last Thursday at 13:32. So we've had the papers for five days and while I appreciate that we are encouraging everyone to get papers in on time for us to go through our pre-meetings so that we can have time to read the papers and ask any pertinent questions before the meeting. At this point, because we have had these papers for five days, I'm not going to turn them away this time. If we'd have received them yesterday or this morning, then I think I would have been encouraged to do so, but because we have had them since last Thursday, I think we've had five days in which we could have had a look at these papers. So, thank you, councillor Homshaw.
I raise it because actually we should be having them for a week, yeah. And preferably in written format is what I've been asking for. We have so many papers that some of them, it is difficult to scrutinise huge amounts of data, so in written format, some of them really need to be in written format, that's what we've been asking for.
Sorry, councillor Homshaw, are you asking for all your papers to be printed on paper?
Yes, if that, yeah.
That's noted, thank you. Can we ensure, Andrew, that... Yeah, I'm just ensuring that papers, I know we are, we've had these discussions, haven't we, that papers do come the week before and that members that require them can have them printed out. Thank you.
So just to be very clear, councillor Homshaw is correct to politely upbraid us about this and we've had a discussion in the Tuned Services Leadership Team and we will endeavour to make sure that future meetings, papers are circulated with at the minimum weeks' notice.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Sam.
Thanks, Chair, hello everybody. And I guess just picking up that point, I'm conscious that this item in particular has got quite a lengthy report with it, so yeah, I'm conscious of that we need to get those papers out early to people so they can take it all in. I'll just summarise what this item is about and it follows on from an agenda item you had in the December committee, I think, which was a shorter briefing about the headlines of the proposed all-phase mainstream commissioning plan. What this is, is a, this would be the first time as a council that we would, if we go through the process, have published an all-phase commissioning plan for mainstream school and education places. In previous years, we might have produced a plan for primary, might have produced a plan for secondary or early years, but what we're proposing to do at this point is combine all of those into an overarching plan, which we think is, you know, the better strategic way to do it. And what we're proposing today is that we have a draft strategy, which we need to consult on reasonably widely, so we're proposing that we put that draft out to consultation, subject to approval of the committee today, and spend four to six weeks' process for consultation in the spring, analyse and take in the results of that consultation and then bring back a proposed final version of a strategy for mainstream places back to this committee in the summer for final approval. The strategy will focus on our statutory duty around mainstream places to ensure that there are sufficient places in early years, in primary schools, in secondary schools and in post-16 provision, over the next three years and beyond. And one of the real advantages of setting that strategy out is school places, as people will probably know, is a slow-moving beast and we need to forecast many, many years into the future to be able to enable us to have sufficient plans to get new school buildings or to change provision over a period of time with plenty of notice. And it's a fairly inexact science, so we can set out our strategies now based on what we think from the information that we have, but we need to come back every year and re-evaluate that based on what's really happened, you know, as opposed to what we thought might happen. So we would anticipate doing a sort of rolling review of the strategy and make sure that our plans are fit with that accordingly. So, the headlines that you had in December talk to you through broadly, I think, what the data seems to be telling us at the moment about where things are going. And broadly speaking, what we've got is a position where we've had a bulge of pupils based on a higher birth rate, which had been moving through the primary phase and is now into the secondary phase and moving through the secondary phase. So I guess broadly speaking, our strategy at the moment, which the team have been working on with schools across the sector, is that the whole sector sort of breathes in and holds a breath for two or three years and we manage that because then we anticipate numbers. And we manage that because then we anticipate numbers in secondary starting to decline, not necessarily even across the city. And the primary numbers will continue to decline over the foreseeable future. So we need to kind of make sure that all our plans are geared up in that, in that direction. So the item will come back once the consultation is done to committee for a final decision based on what we've heard in the consultation. And obviously, both members of this committee and other members and members of their communities and local area will be able to make their comments available to us through the consultation as well. So the recommendations are that the committee notes the contents of the draft plan and agrees for us to undertake that consultation and come back in the summer, once we've done that with a, with a final version. Thank you.
councillor Garbutt.
Thanks. I've got a couple of questions. Thanks for the report. How much slack is there or do you build in to the system? I'm thinking, especially because over the past few years, we've had a couple of influxes of refugee children. And that's almost impossible to foresee. And therefore we need to build in a little bit of slack just to see if that's possible to take that up without too much kerfuffle.
I suppose it's fair to say, especially at the moment, there is no slack. We will put very little or no slack into the system. Partly because financially, that's really, that's a really difficult thing to do. It means that schools might be sort of holding places that then aren't filled. And that's financially a disadvantage to schools who are under, you know, obviously big pressures in terms of their budgets. So we do have to respond to some of those inevitable unforeseeable events, you know, as we go into the year, which does create issues. John Bigley, my colleague who was here earlier on, deals with all the admissions. And many of you will have dealings with John and his team in terms of finding places for pupils in year. And it can be a real challenge, but schools generally are as helpful as they can be and do pull out the stops to help. But we don't generally, and especially at the moment because of the pressure in the system, there is very little slack, if any, in the system at the moment.
Thanks. My second question. You said there's a bulge in, in, in the school population that's moving, now moving through the secondary. But afterwards it will be a decline. Is that decline something that we're aiming for? Or is, is, is that just as it happens?
Yeah, that's just as it happens. Yeah, there's, there's no, it's difficult to set targets in terms of population. I suppose we're dealing with something that's macro scale, you know, and difficult to always predict. I mean, I guess it's fair to say, and it is in the report, we, as a city, we do, we do a good job of making those predictions. And we generally perform quite well on the number of places and the number of kids getting the first, second choices. But it's an inexact science, yeah. And it's very difficult to be precise about it.
Thank you. councillor Ross.
Thank you. I appreciate that sometimes these forecasts are more of an art than a science. And one of the things that in our areas seems to catch us out is that data is collected on addresses of live birth nets, catchment areas. But in between the, the birth, there is often a movement of the family into popular catchment areas. So in Doran Topley Schools, which in my own familiar ways, often the prediction was we have enough places. But the reality is we've, we've oversubscribed. So in forecasting, is there some way we can, and it must happen in, in other popular schools as well, build in sufficient capacity there to, to allow for the movement of people from their original residence into, into a new address? The second thing also is about increasing capacity. This is in the secondary schools. I know expansions are planned at Silverdale and King Eggbert Schools. I haven't seen signs of building yet, but are the planning permission, contracts, et cetera, on track to deliver these expansions on time in these, for these secondary school places?
Yeah, thanks, Colleen. To answer your second question first, yes, the planning permissions are all in place. We've got a well-established project group for those schools. I think they both had, as every planning capital work does have, they've had some snags. But they're all on track as far as I'm aware at the moment. So we're confident that those places are going to be delivered on time. So that's really good news. And in terms of the methodology that we use for forecasting places, there is, there is account taken of the fact that you have migration across city and movement into particular popular areas. Again, that's not perfect science. And I guess sometimes it feels like we get caught out by things. But it's often the fact that we're aware of something, but it actually getting the, getting the response in terms of new places can take longer than, than anyone would like, you know, particularly at the moment. Because what we're trying not to do is build lots of new schools. We're trying to kind of encourage bits of growth here and there to accommodate that, what is that temporary increase in places, which will then decline. I think in those schools in particular, we anticipate, based on the fact that they're in popular areas, that there will be that ongoing increase in capacity needed, which is hence the new builds there. But lots of other areas, it's about trying to just create sort of temporary solutions so that we're not burdening a school with a permanent expansion that then they can't fill over the next five years.
Thank you. It just occurred to me when, when you were speaking as well, another factor is because of the living crisis, there may be well more families in the public sector, if you like, rather than, you know, going to, to private schools as well. And this could put more pressure on particularly, I would think, secondary school places as well. I mean, has that been thought about and allowed for?
Fabio has left my thing on. Yes, difficult to predict, but that's one of the many factors that the team kind of try and take account of when they're, they're kind of doing, I think, you know, new, new housing planning and all those kinds of things are the, you know, the other main factor. You know, whether we might have new builds, how many families that might mean moving into an area. So yeah, all that is really, I don't understand it myself if I'm honest, but you know, it's complicated data exercise, which you need to take every year.
Thank you, councillor Ross. councillor Rooney.
Yeah, I want to return to the late arrival of reports. Whose responsibility is it to make sure that they arrive in time within the deadline for, for members to read them thoroughly?
It's, I mean fundamentally, it's the officer's responsibility. So it's the officer, the director, myself and my office. And we will be working hard to put protocols in place around that councillor reunion to make sure that actually things are done in a timely fashion arrive. So to arrive with you a week early, they're going to have to arrive early, obviously, through the system just to make sure those are adhered to.
I understand that the numbers of people that used to produce reports and do all the back office work has been reduced drastically over the years. And I absolutely understand that we're asking fewer people to do more work. And the change over to the committee system has just exacerbated that difficult situation. But it does make it very difficult to, to feel confident that you're making a, a sensible decision when you're only receiving the papers a few days beforehand. And frankly, you know, we do do other things other than read council papers, you know. You can't just, there are some things you can't just drop as a human being to sit and read. Some late arrival, arriving papers. I mean, these are actually quite important ones. And I haven't been able to look at them. It's part of that through illness. But I don't, I don't feel very happy about just nodding things through that I haven't had the opportunity to, to read. Because what I wanted to raise in, in the all-phase mainstream commissioning is one particular item that is bugging a lot of people in the south east of the city. The fact that we don't have any sixth form provision. Is that, is that in this paper?
Yeah, there is a, there's a section in there about post-16 provision.
Does it say you're going to give us some in the south east, please?
It doesn't say that specifically. It's, it's more of a strategic paper about the numbers and those.
Because the kids from wide part of the world have to travel all over the city to get, to get sixth form provision, because they actually obeyed the rules when they were changed. They disbanded sixth forms and the schools that didn't are now thriving. They're the ones that have still got them. In fact, they're the ones that my, the people that I represent are going to, having to get two buses to go and get on them. So it should be in.
Thank you, councillor Rooney. I'm sure we can bring that up in the consultation. And there is a recommendation on how we as members get involved in that consultation throughout the spring. So we'll make sure, yeah, we'll make sure.
I was going to say, Chair, it would be really good to hear comments and views from, yeah, residents in the area as well, yeah, to strengthen that point.
Thank you. councillor Homeshaw, then councillor Lee.
Yeah, thank you councillor Dale. Page seven of the agenda item 10, it may be in other people's papers as, as a different number, but it's page seven I've got, which is about the consultation. So we're seeking key stakeholders and partners. And there's a whole list of folks who are going to be spoken to in terms of the consultation. But what's, what caught my eye was the phrase informal consultation. So what does informal mean in this, in this context? And what confidence do I have that, that these stakeholders are going to be consulted? Will actually feed into the report? There's that term informal that makes me think, are they being taken seriously?
Yeah, I hear your question, councillor. I'm trying to find which page you're looking at.
It's page seven of nine and it is 3.2, just above 3.3, second line in.
Oh, yeah, I found it, yeah. I think what we're trying to put in there is that the consultation, we'll, we'll try and use a number of methods to hear different voices. So obviously putting a survey online is one way of formally doing some consultation. By informal, what we mean is, you know, if a particular group or wants to have a particular conversation about one element of the plan, we're more than happy to go out and have that conversation. What it doesn't mean is that we'll talk to somebody and not write anything down and not take any note of it. So I can hear, I'm hearing and I'm, I think I'm keying into the point about the language in there, that it sounds like it, it's, it wouldn't be as important as filling a survey in. And I suppose I would want to assure you as a committee that it would be. And if we need to make sure that we're clear about the language, I'll take that point.
Thank you for that, for clarification there. The term informal can also sound, make it sound as though it's a bit casual as well. And I was just trying to flesh out, you know, how, how it's going to feed in. So you're saying there are going to be different methods of dealing with different groups. But it will be collated together and it will seriously be taken as, as evidence.
Yes, yeah. Whatever methods we use to gather information and data, it will be treated with equal weight, you know, wherever we gather it from.
Thank you. Just picking up on that, it is quite unclear. But further down, it says, does say individual statutory consultation will be undertaken as appropriate on the 3.3. So, yeah, I think it's kind of, there's a bit of everything for everyone to be able to engage, hopefully. Thank you very much. councillor Lee.
Thanks. I just wanted to go back to the papers issue. We're not the only committee where this happens. And it happens in, in other committees as well. And, and maybe it's this year, we're all getting used to trying to get up to speed and make sure that we have got the papers and other things in place so that we can all make good decisions. But it is worrying, isn't it, that we had a referendum where people wanted to make sure that all councillors had a say and a vote on policy. And if, if that is not enabled to happen, then the spirit of that referendum has just been lost. You know, in the past, a cabinet member will have been absolutely, would have gone through these papers with a root, with a fine tooth comb. Other people will have, other councillors would have, maybe in the ruling group and there would have been policy committees, it would have gone to cabinet. But all those things would have happened. And there was an argument against, you know, that we, we should include all councillors, which is fine. That's where we are. That's democracy. But we do need to make sure that the spirit of that referendum and the choice is upheld, really. That's what I wanted to say about that one. So I, I agree with what's been said so far. And I'm not, I'm not, it's not criticism of officers here, because I know they're trying to work to a deadline as well. And a deadline we're all trying to get used to. So that was that one. And just my, just on page, it's 1.9 on page four really about the extra demand for special education needs and disabilities. I know there's some, there's explanations for why that might be happening, better medical care, better medical intervention and all those things. But there's other, you know, people, kids with special, with social, emotional and mental health needs, that's sort of a catch-all, really. And I'm still not sure exactly what we, why that is going up, what is, what, what the research says about those kinds of children that are coming forward with those kinds of problems.
Do you want to respond?
Yes, thank you. Jo Horabin, Director of Integrated Commissioning, I worked with Sam and with Cathy on this, on this paper. So first of all, I want to apologise that members have received this, the paper late. And, you know, we'll look into the process behind that. We did have the papers in advance with the pre-agenda meeting. We may have had to make some changes as a result of that pre-agenda meeting. So, you know, we have gone through that, the paper with members in that meeting. I just wanted to pick up on the, on the point about informal consultation. Because actually, having just double-checked, this is not statutory consultation. And I think when we've said informal consultation, that's what we're getting at here. We should have been specific. We should have said that this consultation is not statutory requirement. Were we to be closing a school, for example, there would be a statutory consultation. That would be a formal requirement of us. So apologies if the language wasn't clear, but that's the rationale behind it. So thank you. We'll make sure we take account of that. And I would just echo what Sam has said already about a really wide range of channels. So, you know, engagement that we have with head teachers, for example, you know, regular, relatively informal catch-ups with head teachers and other mechanisms that we'll use to gather, to gather information and feedback. The point about social, emotional and mental health is a, is a very good one. And I am quite happy. I know it's something that the committee have raised before and feel strongly about. And I think it would be useful to come back here with, and we have talked about this before, to come back here with that wider picture, really. And I do wonder whether it would be useful to do a joint presentation with our health colleagues. Because this is something that we're looking at in terms of a city priority for the health and care system in its broadest sense. So very happy to, to do that. And I am conscious we, that that is something that we are, that we are working with our colleagues in health on. And it is a priority area. And there are, there are a number of possible assumptions and, and hypotheses about that, that increase in social, emotional, mental health. Not least the impact of the pandemic in more recent times. But very happy to come back with health colleagues and provide, you know, a, a more specific piece around that, that area of need.
Thank you, Jo. Can we have it noted then that we're going to be having a joint meeting with health? Thank you. councillor Garbutt, you want us to come back in?
Thanks. Two points. The first, going back onto the papers. I attended the latest governance meeting on, yesterday morning, I think it was, where it was noted that a lot of committees are getting papers late. This is something that is being addressed. So I think just keep our eye on that. Second point, on the, on what Jo was talking about. I've been talking with the head of Sharrow School, Evelyn, who's been having a lot of problems with year two children along the social, emotional health, mainly because of Covid. And she's probably been talking to you as well. So I just wondered if that could be investigated, whether that was happening across the city, obviously. It would be very strange if it was only happening in Sharrow School. So, and whether there was something that we could put, put in place. I know Evelyn has put quite a lot in place to try and address that. I was wondering if we could put something in place to try and help those year two children. They've missed out on, on preschool, they've missed out on, on, on the first year of schooling. So, so it's really, really difficult for them. A lot of them are very confused and quite, you know, all over the place.
Thank you, Jo. Just, I'd like you, I'll let you come back in. I think on that, there are, there are a number of issues at certain pinch points throughout. I think on that, there are, there are a number of issues at certain pinch points throughout a child's transition. So there will be year-two, we've got two-year fell, two-year children who have got limited speech and language because they've not had any social interaction. We've got five-six children who are going to be going up to secondary school who have not got the emotional maturity to be able to problem solve. So I think it might be worth us having a look at the, all of the different transitions that our children are going to have to be going through and whether or not they've got the skill set to be able to fulfil those transitions effectively. And I think if we could come back to that, if that would be all right. Thanks, Jo. If you also want to respond, councillor Garbutt?
Just, just to, to respond to that, yeah, absolutely. We're hearing, we're hearing this kind of feedback from early years settings, from childcare settings, from teachers, head teachers and from health professionals as well. And we are having quite a lot of discussions with health, which is why I think it's important we do a joint response to this question. Because it will take a whole system approach, a multi-agency approach, including how we work with families, how we work with children and young people, how we ensure we're hearing their voice, how we work with the education system and, you know, and our early, early intervention and prevention activity across all of those, those parts. And of course, the voluntary and community sector who have a huge part to play. And are very often the, the organisations and the capacity that picks up some of the pieces when things get very difficult for a family. So I think this is a whole system responses is required. And I know colleagues in Kevin's Drawn Service, Educational Skills, will be able to speak to their part in that. And similarly, we can, we can speak to our, Sally Williams would be able to speak, Director of Children and Families, more eloquently than I on our early intervention and prevention for young children and young people and our services there. But it is work that we're doing and we are looking at multi-agency transitions. That is, that is a key priority for us as a health and care system. So I think, you know, it would be helpful to bring that back and share and to have input from members.
Thank you. Do any of the members have any more questions on this report? Any comments? No. Okay, so this report contains recommendations for approval. The recommendations are that this committee notes the content of the mainstream commissioning plan and associated action plans, including the vision, values, principles and our approach to sufficiency planning, notes the intention to share the draft plan with key stakeholders and other interested parties via a consultation in spring 2023 and endorses the plan for this purpose. Recommendation number three is to advise how committee members wish to engage in the spring consultation, either by a workshop, focus group or other means. Before we agree on the recommendations, could I ask committee members what format you would like to use to be consulted? Would you like a workshop? Would you like a drop-in session? Do you like a focus group? Would you like to invite other people in? Don't all answer me at once. Councillor Holmes, sure then.
Well, for what it's worth, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Councillor Holmes, sure.
Workshop, by preference, that's, that's where I like to do things, working together.
Councillor Lee?
Same.
Councillor Ross?
More or less agree. I was gonna say drop-in sessions don't really work because people don't drop in, so, yeah.
Okay, can we have arranged for us to do a workshop then in spring? Thank you. So at this point then, are we all agreed on the recommendations in this report? Any dissent? So I'd like to note that the recommendations have been agreed. Thank you. Thanks, Sam. Thanks, Jo.
But actually, I saw that my comments on six form in the South East are noted and minuted somewhere.
Thank you, we'll make sure they're in our notes.
A dissent.
Thank you. Very important point though, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is item number 11, which is page 65 of the Supplemental Reports Pack. This is the Alternative Provision Review, presenting offices, you're not Jo Horrabin. It does say Jo and Candy, but have you changed? Okay. Yep, so if you, has everyone got a side of the report? If you'd like to start presenting your report, thank you.
Afternoon. No, I'm not Jo Horrabin, I'm Tim Armstrong, Head of Access and Collegium, colleague Candy Lawson. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Candy Lawson, I'm Strategic Commissioning Manager in Integrated Commissioning.
And you've actually got two items between both of us covering three things, just to make life interesting for you. So both of our items are in regard to alternative provision. So I'm bringing the first paper, which is around the Alternative Provision Review and our framework. And Candy will then bring the paper around the alternative provision free schools. We have, we tried to put them all in one single paper. It's not possible for various reasons, but there is a very real value to us having it in separate papers, particularly for the AP free school in terms of evidence and information decision there, which Candy will reference. So if I start with the paper in terms of the alternative provision review. So we've done, been, I feel like I've been here a few times in terms of alternative provision. We came last May in terms of a framework and we said we were in the process of reviewing that. We've done a couple of workshops with you as members. We do have a need to get you out and about to see some of our unregulated providers. And a reminder that by unregulated, we mean providers who are not Ofsted registered, rather than not within any form of regulation and oversight. And therefore, that's why they're defined as such. So the purpose of the report is to, in the first report is to present two things. One is the strategic direction of travel around our strategy for alternative provision in the city. And the second is to seek approval on the commissioning of a new framework to be in place from this September, which we're proposing a three-year framework. And as part of that, we're hoping to take steps to develop sustainability of the, of the providers. Because as members will remember, one of the challenges of creating good quality unregulated AP in the system is the lack of any form of sustainability for those providers. So if I briefly talk about the strategic intent, we've done quite a lot of work with you and with others to gather information. And so what we're providing now is a potential and proposed direction of travel that would respond to our inclusion strategy vision and respond to the Send AP Green Paper. And specifically, I've given you summaries at 1.4.2 in terms of what we're proposing on that. And so happy to take questions on that. The second part, as I said, is in regard to our framework. We're proposing a three-year framework which allows that sustainability. And the approval from the committee is to approve the commissioning of that framework that then will go through our procurement process. Happy to do it via questions or explain things further as needed.
Councillor Rooney?
Hello. I should have asked this question probably some time ago. I'm not entirely sure what you mean by framework. And I think it might be helpful to any members of the public reading this, if you had a definition of what you mean by that. I've never quite, I don't think I fully understood what you mean by framework.
And so what we have is our unregulated providers apply to join a framework where we basically, so what that is, is a set of criteria that they must fulfil to enter a, a basic agreement that we will then be able to trade their provision with schools. So they agree to provide and deliver provision in a certain way. We say approved through our legal measures, through our procurement measures, through safeguarding checks and others, that they are a suitable provider for a school to engage with. And then we have a team who work with schools to match young people who are on that framework. So we use framework as a, as a catch-all for essentially a group of providers that we say, this, this and this, these checks have been made, therefore we deem them to be safe and appropriate for schools to work with. You're still looking confused for me. So the reason why to frame, and I might bring Sarah in from a legal point of view rather than a contract, is because the, the, the framework is the first part that says that they are in a position where people can contract with them. So it creates almost as checks and balances that then individual schools buy places. So best way to describe it is we put people on, we put our providers on a zero-hours contract, a zero-hours contract is probably the best way. And then people can buy from there. But Sarah will probably explain the legal elements for it far better than I can.
Basically, it says, in order to do, in order to trade, you have to do that, that, that and that. And if you don't, you don't get, you don't get to trade. That's what it is.
That's exactly what it is, councillor Rooney. It's a, it's a form, it is a form of contract. And it's, it varies, it, the specifics of the terms will vary. So in certain contracts, they will commit that if we go to them and say that we want a piece of work, that they will, that they will pick that up. And that's, but we don't necessarily have to go to them, the kind of zero-hours contract. In some cases, what it is, is it's sort of pre-authorising, but they commit to say that they will engage with the, with us if we want to send them more work. There are very boring rules about what is and isn't a framework. But fundamentally, it's as if you described it, they agree to work in certain ways. And because they've agreed to work in certain ways and perhaps guarantee particular prices or particular ways of operating, we agree that we will use them as opposed to going out to the whole market every time.
Andrew, would you like to just come in on that?
Yes, so just to pick up on councillor Rooney's comment about being on the framework means that that provider can trade. So I want to be really clear. The responsibility for determining what alternative provision schools use for their young people sits with the school. So actually, our framework is a set of criteria that we've got. And we've got a number of providers on our framework, but there are other providers outside of that framework. And actually, schools, because they take account of the responsibility, schools can actually trade with other providers who are not in our framework. And that does sometimes occur. So it needs to be really clear that it's not only the people on our framework that provide alternative provision in the city.
Thank you, Andrew. Does anyone else have any questions on this report from Tim? Good. And it's hopefully clear to people that are watching as well. Thank you. Okay, so do you want us to, do you want to come back in, Tim?
Yeah, I do just want to be very clear that there is two parts to this report. So obviously, a big part of it is our strategic direction and seeking approval for the strategic direction, which isn't just about the framework. Framework is one part of an AP, effective AP system. Candy will talk about another part, but there are more parts than beyond that. So as I said, at 1.4.2, we're proposing a model which will include medical provision, exclusion provision, intervention, different approaches that we want to go to consult on. So I did want to just reiterate that whilst we are looking for agreement for the framework as one part, we're also seeking support from, from the committee that actually, yes, this is the right strategic direction of travel in line with the workshops that we've done. And we want to now go out to consult on that. The reason why that's important is because we're also articulating some of that in our bid with the DFE on the AP free school. So we want to be able to say that actually this has very clear support from a political and leadership point of view.
Councillor Ross?
Yeah, just to reassure members of the public that we're not just looking at this cold. We have had a couple of workshops as, as members of this committee with the alternative providers. And perhaps the lack of questions at this point are because we've asked those questions and had reassurances during, during the workshops. And I think it's probably worthwhile, but it's matter of public record, that we're not just sleeping through this. We have been thoroughly briefed in two very long sessions on alternative provisions already.
Thank you, councillor Ross. Candy, did you want to come in? Okay, nice man. Candy, are you wanting to speak on agenda item 11 or agenda item 12? Okay, so on agenda item number 11, the report contains recommendations for approval, which are to endorse the strategic intent to develop and implement the appropriate changes, everything that Tim said. Approve the commission of the new framework for providers to deliver alternative provision services for use by Sheffield schools and services within the children's service portfolio set out in the report. And it endorses that in developing the new framework, work is undertaken to develop models of greater sustainability for providers on the framework and costs that support the appropriate placement of children on the framework. Are we all in agreement? Thank you. So the outcome of that is that everyone agrees. Thank you. Candy, item number 12.
Thank you. So as part of the model that Tim set out in that paper, we believe we need to create some regulated, school-based alternative provision in the city, which is a gap for us at the moment. And we feel that by creating some, something like that, we'll create more choice and more sort of breadth of different types of provision that meets the different ranges of needs we've got in the city. So Sheffield has an opportunity to bid to the Department for Education for an alternative provision free school. If we were successful in the bid, we would, we would secure capital fund, capital funding to build a school minus any abnormal capital costs and base funding, which is kind of child-level base running costs for the first two years of opening. The paper that in front of you comes to committee under the committee's remit to make decisions in respect of establishing a new school. So the ask of this paper is to approve that we submit the bids. The bids will be led by two multi-academy trusts. So important to note that the bids to DFE must be led by a multi-academy trust with the local authority as a partner on that bid, albeit the, the bids wouldn't be successful without the local authority as a partner. The two multi-academy trusts that we've identified through a process to work with are Minerva and Brigantia, which are two big and experienced trusts in our city. And in developing these bids, we've worked really closely with them to look at areas of good practice outside the city and really learn from what's going on across the country. Core to this is the Centre for Social Justice identified Sheffield as a cold spot. They deemed us as a cold spot for alternative provision, which basically means that we don't have regulated, registered, school-based alternative provision in the city that meets those needs. So the, if we were successful, we think that this would add a kind of a long-term, school-based AP that complements the wide model that Tim set out, aiming to support vulnerable children to access education and succeed as a preventative approach. So getting in there and really working with children prior to exclusion and suspensions and trying to bring down those exclusions and suspensions in our city. So it's really about building resilience in children and aiming to reintegrate children back into the mainstream, wherever that's possible and is appropriate. So we are aiming to submit two bids. So each bid is for one school of between 100 and 120 places, which would offer flexible, school-based provision, which would look like, which would have a range. So there would be short-term, part-time places where children are dual-registered back in their mainstream school. Outreach into the mainstream school is a kind of a preventative offer and also aiming to outreach into different areas of the city so that we reduce the need for travel. Longer term, including full-time places where that's really appropriate to meet the need of the child. And children would all may remain dual-registered at their home school throughout this, which is really about creating that and maintaining that connection back to their home school and that accountability. And with the hope that we would always reintegrate children back into their school at the appropriate point for them. So in terms of buildings, we would aim to, if we were successful, we're putting together, we're putting forward to the DFE potential sites in the north and the east of the city. So in our most deprived areas where we know the need is. The focus of the schools is really around that social and emotional, mental health needs and in a preventative way. So thinking about children that are not accessing education or struggling in their mainstream school because of things like stress and anxiety. If we were successful, we would know by the summer. And the builds we expect would be ready, so we would be opening a new school by around 2026 to 2027. So this is a long-term goal that kind of sits alongside the work that Tim's doing. If we're not successful, we do believe that Sheffield children need this sort of provision and we need this as part of the system. So if we, if we're not successful, we will work with those trusts collaboratively to look at other alternatives. So we'll be looking at longer-term approaches and where we use existing buildings. Obviously, we wouldn't be getting that big capital build, so we'd be looking at how we do things in different ways, whether it's kind of hub-and-spoke type models or whether we can build on some of our existing providers. In terms of funding to run the schools, so there, would we believe there's a cost of, and this is through benchmarking across the country, we believe there's a cost of around £18,000 per place to a school like this. So we would receive £10,000 per place of base funding for the two, first two years of any successful bid. Following that, provision would be made in the high-needs block to sustain that funding. And top-up would be from the schools, so the top-up amount would be So the top-up amount would be chargeable to schools in the same way as it is now, say, through the framework and in, in other providers. And within that, the local authority would aim to be buying 20%, so up to 20 places of those top-up places for school, for each school, with the aim to create sustainability and financial security in the model. Other costs for the LA may be abnormal costs, capital costs. So abnormal costs in terms of capital are things like not-weed or things that are not expected in the normal capital build, of which in Sheffield we have quite a lot of abnormal costs because of our hills and valleys. So we estimate that that could be up to one million if we were to succeed at two schools. And the likelihood is that we would get one, um, successful bid if we were to get one. We, we'd aim for two, but we think, we'd, we'd hope that we get one. And this is accounted for in our high-needs capital allocation. So minimizing those abnormal costs is part of the whole considerations around feasibility that our colleagues in capital are doing. So in, in summary, we just think this is a really good opportunity for Sheffield that we wouldn't want to miss and would add to that range of options that we've got for children. So back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Candy. I've got, uh, Councillor Rooney first.
We're putting in a joint bid for a special educational needs school in the north of the city, aren't we? With Barnsley. I just wondered, is there any benefit in putting in a joint bid in this instance? Would it be looked upon more favourably if we did that with this bid?
We did look at that as a, as a potential and we, um, decided because of the level of need in the city and also because we felt that Sheffield is a bit of an outlier and that we need this in our city, that we felt that we would be stronger, um, to deliver, just as a solo local authority. However, the bid itself is not led by a local authority. The bid is led by the trust. So for example, Brigantia and Minerva would be leading and owning the bid and would be the lead trust, but they may and probably would trade with places like Barnsley and, and Rotherham if there was, um, an appetite for that. And I know they've been in contact with, um, with, with part, with neighbouring authorities to that effect. So it's, it's, it's very, um, it's expected that that, well, that would happen over time, but the bid is led by the trust, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Question on 1.34 on page H2. And it just says, um, there'll be, as part of the development of this provision, there'll be a specific focus on addressing inequalities. And we know that children of black and ethnic minority backgrounds are more likely to be excluded than their white counterparts. So what, what does that mean? Does that mean that this is an alternative provision for children from that particular community? Because it just reads a bit like that. So I just want some reassurance that, you know, schools are doing as, as much as they possibly can to keep all children in mainstream education. And, and we don't have a high proportion of kids from those particular communities, which says they're, they're excluded. But this provision is not going to see a high proportion of children from those communities in that particular school if we are successful. Because that'd be, because that's how I'm reading it at the moment. So I just want some reassurance about that.
Okay, so we do know that in our exclusion figures, we do have an over-representation of some young people from some minority groups. So what's prudent upon us is to be looking at those figures and thinking about, well, where do we need to place our alternative provision and our expertise to support those schools and to support those communities to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support those young people in mainstream school? So the school itself, no, isn't, isn't about focusing on a particular minority group. Um, it's more about providing expertise and providing a range of different provisions into our areas of most deprivation and also making sure that we're reaching out into those schools.
I think the, the important thing I would add is, and completely agree with Candy, the important thing I would add is that the, the schools and, and even AP in its entirety is one part of a much bigger piece of work. And that fuller piece of work to look at how our schools are responding. We've talked around the data that we have around children who are excluded. We know that if we look at our pupil referral unit where our excluded children go at the moment, it's overrepresented, particularly for the Roma community, but also from other minority groups. And so we have to look at how are we addressing that within the city as a whole to reduce that level of exclusions? You're absolutely right. What we can't do is set up provision that is the Roma provision or the minority group provision. And that's not the intent. The intent is that it's a resource for the city as a whole. But it, the reason why it's within that conversation is as a city, our level of exclusion is overrepresented in some groups rather than others. And so we need to ensure that in all of our work that we're doing around addressing needs in the city, we're thinking about what do we need to do different there? Um, I, I know we've recently had a conversation about the Roma community in Page Hall as an example, um, from a number of head teachers, um, uh, and partners just about the specific challenges. And if we always do what we've always done, we're going to end up with the same problem. So, um, we are, we have tasked the trusts to say, how can the work, particularly that you're doing upstream? So if we go back to the SEND AP green paper, it talks about work upstream in school. How can you take the expertise and target that to reduce that level of exclusions for those groupings? So either it's a critical part of the work of the school and the system, but it will not and cannot become a, um, a school for a particular minority grouping.
Because, yeah, and, and as it reads, I suppose what, what I'd take from that if I was just somebody from, a member of the public, is that, um, schools are failing in that particular community of children in that they're not keeping them in mainstream school. Because I'm sure those kids are no, particularly not any different than any other, uh, uh, community of, of children in Sheffield. And, um, it's just very worrying to me that kids from my area in Darnall might be more likely to be excluded than other children in another area because it's more that something's happening to prevent it happening for, in one school, but not maybe happening in another school. So, you know, it is concerning to me that that is the case.
And it's very clear, our data shows us, um, we have a dataset that looks at the percentage of the population in terms of how much they're missing school. We've called exclusions in all forms. It was part of the one-year plan in terms of how we look at it. We've looked at our data there and, and it, it is a reality of our city at the moment that certain minority groupings are more likely to be excluded in all forms from school. They're less likely to be in education. It, it's a plain fact for us as a city at the moment. And so all of our work has to look at how we address that across those. And, and, and this is no exception in that.
I suppose it happens across all spheres of work, whether it's in the Health Service or Education Service. And I think it's a very fundamental question we all need to ask ourselves about how, um, how this, these, this comes about really and what we are doing or how we might be failing and what questions we're not asking about ourselves as much as the child or the parents or the wider community.
Thank you. Councillor Ross.
Thank you. A couple of points really, I support the bid because it's something we, we clearly need as well. Uh, my first question was, was going to be, what happens if the bid doesn't succeed? But in your presentation, you, you've got a plan B, as it were, because we will need more alternative provision, you know, come what may. And it'd be better if it could be provided with capital investment. My actually substantive question i- is actually referring back to something that I, I raised before. It's 5.6.2 that, that incur transport costs of around half a million pounds per year by the transport services. So we're actually, you know, compounding the problem that I highlighted in, in a previous report. And we have got time to address this problem now, assuming that we get these, the bid is successful. But it, it was ever thus almost that the special needs transport budget was always a budgetary problem, you know, going back, back years. We've never actually got it under control and there's even more pressure going on that. So that needs to be into our forward thinking, how are we going to cover this? You know, without, you know, breaking the budget yet again on special needs transport.
I'm not sure I can answer as to how we will reduce the spend, but what I can tell you is kind of how we're trying to reduce the, the need for that transport. So as part of the school's remit, there will be outreach as, as part of the model. So the idea of that is, for example, if, if the bid, if the, um, if the school is based in one area and the school, the child that, that needs that provision is, is along, is right over at the other side of the city, the first point of call might be about outreach into the home school. So we've got those options. Also, this does, again, it does sit as part of the much broader model. So the idea being here is that we're creating a range of options. So when a child is identified as needing alternative provision, what we'd be looking at is what is the best fit for that child rather than the immediate, let's put, let's allocate a place in the AP school. There might be a whole range of different types of vision we could look at through the framework, through the AP free school, through other different options we've got in the city. So it's, it's about creating that big range. But the other point I suppose is that if successful and we'd be able to build a new school, we'd be trying to base that school right in our, in our areas of highest need in the city, which is something that we don't really have. So a lot of the provision that we've got is, is in buildings that we, we happen to have. And, and it's not always in the areas that, that the children are coming from. So hopefully we would reduce some of that in that way.
The, the other point I'd just add to it is that one of the real focuses for the school is about reintegration. One of our challenges at the moment is we end up placing children in schools away from their home. They lose that relational part. Part of that bid and that upstream work is that it should be about a timing to a specialist provision that the child needs, but with the intent of going back into their local community. So whilst, you know, we know from things like our pupil referral unit where they didn't used to have access to transport, kids didn't go. So we need to put the transport in place, but we need to make sure that we do everything to get the kids back into their local school. And that's a critical part of the bid.
Okay, thank you for the reassurance. And yes, you know, outreach work first, reintegration, if they have to be placed and helps in the community schools as well. But I'd also urge thinking forward that from the outset, if they do have to travel, that we have, um, rather than, the first protocol is putting them on the minibus. Because once they've got minibus transport, parents in particular think, well, this is quite a good idea. We actually, um, you know, encourage the independent travel, even if it's with some assistance. So it's part of their education anyway to become independent travellers. So that perhaps, think of it as a first resort, supported travel, then independent travel, rather than just allocating a minibus place. I think habits of getting the minibus are very hard to break.
Thank you, Councillor Ross. Councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair. It occurs to me that one of the problems that, um, this is trying to redress is the lack of control that the council has over how schools teach. Because they're academies and they're no longer under local education authority control, if that even exists anymore. So, um, instead of, um, trying to make sure that schools teach in a way and interact with the pupils in a way that doesn't produce, um, so many, uh, people being, you know, losing, losing school time. That, that's not possible. So, so what you're trying to do here is to provide, uh, the schools with a way of putting these people somewhere where they can still be in education. I know you mentioned that you were trying to get, um, or the schools themselves were trying to, to adjust ways of teaching to, um, prevent that happening, to prevent, uh, pupils being, uh, um, put out of school. I've forgotten the word. What is it? Substained it or yes, yes? Whether it's permanent or, or temporary. I just wondered how far, how, how wide the net they were casting to, to find ways of, of, of doing that. Because if they, if they've got certain things that they're not going to change come what may, then that will still produce people who can't work within that system. So I, I, I'm, whilst I think it's one of the few things that we as a council can do, I do think that schools need to think a bit more widely about the ways they, um, they prevent their pupils not being able to learn in that, um, in that environment.
Andrew, would you like to come in on that?
I just want to pick on the first point because the, um, it's not really to whether their academies are maintained because actually all, the, the style of teaching and decisions around that are all, is fully delegated to our schools. So all schools, even maintained schools, determine how they're going to teach children. And that's why we have an individual school inspection regime. So each school is then inspected to see whether the quality of edu, of education is, um, is adequate or not. We, we have in place a number of other things, including the trauma-informed, um, approach across the city that I think virtual schools have now signed up to, but certainly the overwhelming majority have. Because, Councillor Garbutt, I think you're right, is just understanding where children are coming from, the best manner of actually providing for them, educating them and teaching them, depending on what they actually bring along with that, rather than having a one-size-fits-all. And our most successful schools in the city take a very individualised, personalised approach to the way in which they educate children, rather than just trying to do it, you know, like I say, in a one-size-all-fits-manor.
Thank you. Candy.
Yeah, so I suppose firstly, I'd just say that we're working with the two trusts, the two big trusts in our city. And, um, you know, I can confirm those trusts are really enthusiastic about, let's prevent children being excluded in this city. Let's work together to develop really inclusive ways of working. But I think we, we acknowledge that sometimes young people need some time out of mainstream or they need a different approach for a short amount of time. And that is what the green paper acknowledges. Um, equally, I think what we see in the city is increasingly, you know, complex and high needs, particularly following, um, the pandemic. We see a lot of young people struggling with, um, emotional and wellbeing needs. So this is partly a bit of a response to that. And the other thing that I think the trusts have identified themselves, so we've got two big trusts there with, I don't know how many schools between them, but a number across the city, um, is that actually if we start to develop those skills and those expertise within those two trusts, we have a way of building on that and working with the other academy trusts in the city. So, um, Tim is leading on some work around developing the inclusion model, which I'm sure you'll talk about in a moment. But between the two trusts that we've got and the inclusion model that we're trying to develop and our inclusion task force that brings together, um, school leads from all our seven localities, there is very much a commitment to rolling out trauma-informed approaches, developing inclusive practice and using alternative provision as a way of, um, supporting the need at preventative level and then reintegrating so as not to be excluding children. So I think I'd reassure you that actually I think there's a real will and a drive in the city to do that.
I think just to build on what Candy's saying, and it's, I think it's about 12 schools across the trust, just trying to add it up in your head, um, and their primary and secondary and post-16 provision. The, the reality is at this point in time, our schools are, have got incredibly high, we've, we've got incredibly high levels of exclusions and incredibly high level of school absence. You're absolutely right. What we shouldn't be doing is building schools, say, right, that's a problem. Let's just move everybody, everybody into there. But the, the original concerns that were always brought up about AP schools was that they'd become sink schools. One of the things that we're very clear about within this bid is that access would be through multi-agency decision-making so that it isn't a case of every school goes great, can you take these, these children over here? But actually, any placement is part of a coordinated plan. And as I said earlier, this is one part of a much bigger piece of work that is ongoing around inclusion. So Candy mentioned the inclusion model and, um, I think we're, we're bringing that to Children's SLT and then hopefully briefing, um, to elected members. But we're trying to look at how do we bring all of our SEN challenges, our mental health challenges, our family challenges, all the things that schools are dealing with on a day-to-day basis. There are primary universal service in the city dealing with our young people. How do we bring all that together and wrap the right support at the right time to get that early intervention? Because, um, uh, this morning I was at a meeting with, um, our, with school leaders around behaviour and exclusion in the west of the city. We've got those regularly happening now, so northeast and west. And the conversations we're having is how do we get to the things that would make a difference so that schools can manage the population that they're seeing, particularly the additional challenges they're seeing post-pandemic? So I would agree, I'd want to reassure you, this is not a single bullet. You know, part of the reason why both papers have come together, rather than here's a school, can we sign off and agree a school, is because it's part of a broader system that we've got to get right. As a city, we don't have it right. We have financial challenges, we have, um, uh, social challenges, we've got all sorts of different things going on. We've got a lot of work to do and we talked about a much broader social, emotional, mental health and we use that a bit as a catch-all, but actually it's a definition in the Code of Practice, social, emotional, mental health. That approach that needs to happen so that the partnership around our schools and around, most importantly, our young people comes together well. We're not there yet as a city. That's why we've got to keep drilling down on these challenging issues and saying, what do we do with that bit? If we try to look at it all in one, we, we, we would not get anywhere. We'd be overwhelmed. If we try to look at it all in one, we would not get anywhere, we'd be overwhelmed. So we're trying to chunk the, chunk, what's the term, is it chunk the elephant or whatever it is? Chunk it up a bit to try and say, let's deal with this bit. But I do want to reassure that this is part of a much bigger picture of work that has to go on, and is going on for our young people.
Thank you. I have a question, this Chair. Oh, sorry, Peter, do you want to come in?
Only to say that that's quite reassuring, the fact that it is a part of a much bigger piece of work, not all of which has been started yet or it's still in preliminary work stage. I have to say that these questions were prompted by my own experience of teaching in a post-16 alternative provision, where the atmosphere within that particular place was very, very different from any school I've ever sought in. And the people who came to the school were enabled to actually study and to gain some good qualifications. So, you know, it's very different from any school. So my thinking was, schools could learn from that, because it was a very new way of thinking about how to impart information, I suppose, how to make sure that the children, young adults, were all engaged and happy there. That was what prompted the thought.
Thank you, councillor Garbutt. Just from myself then, I have a comment and a couple of questions really. And I think it is really important that we are ambitious for our young people in Sheffield. And we have worked quite hard on this alternative provision work with officers and stakeholders. And I think it's really important, still yet to meet more young people and gather their experiences and listen to what they think would work well for them as future adults in our city. The couple of questions I do have is firstly, how were the multi-agency trusts selected to work with? And also, I would like to have an understanding of how successful you think these bids would be based on the track record of the providers that we've chosen?
Okay, so in terms of how we identified the trusts, when we were notified of the opportunity by the Department of Education, we put out to all our multi-academy trusts a opportunity to express an interest. And we did that by using a set of 10 priorities that were priorities for us as a local authority. So between commissioning and education skills, we looked at our data and we said, well, what are the needs that we really need to meet here? Where are our priorities? And we communicated those to the trusts and said, please give us an expression of interest if you'd like to lead a bid. I think nine, seven, eight, 10, 10 trusts came forward, and we went through a process with those. Through that process and through discussion about what the bid would mean, what the commitment would mean, how we would develop it, a couple of the trusts decided, actually, we're interested in working with you on AP, but this bid is not for us. So it narrowed down in that way. And then we scored those bids and identified them there. So that's how we did that. In terms of how successful, were you asking how successful you think the bids are likely to be? Is that to Andrew?
Yeah, so I think just in relation to the second part of your question around track record, ultimately, the decision around which of any of our applications and bids that we've either made or supported would be made by the DFE. On other occasions, for example, on the previous two new special schools, one that opened in September, one that's opening next September, officers were involved, and members, I think, as well actually, in the selection process. And I would imagine that if it progresses to that point where some of our applications are to be considered, that we will probably be involved in that as well. Clearly, the DFE will look at capacity and they'll look at track record of the trusts that made an application, both longer term and, I suppose, most recently as well. In relation to the two trusts who have, who made it through to the final part of the process and we've supported it, they've both got very good track records in terms of good improvement, in terms of actually moving schools on. That's not to say that's a straight path or there are no bumps in the road along that. So for example, in part of the Minerva Trust is hands with Grange, which has recently declined, and that in particular is, I'm sure, of interest to the DFE as part of that. So we'll see how much weight they put on factors like that. But both do have, our confidence, Minerva has worked closely with Ecclesfield School, with Stockton Bridge High School, and both have improved significantly, and we're confident that they do have the capacity to do that. But yes, I think you're right to flag up that actually, track record immediate and longer term will probably be a factor in how the DFE decides on this.
Thank you, Tim.
Just to add to that, I suppose one of the things that we did identify is that neither trust have run an AP school, but both trusts have engaged with people who have run AP schools. So Minerva has a former AP school head within their trust, and Brigantea have worked with somebody who has a track record of and experience of that. So in terms of their track record of delivering this type of education as well, they have brought that to play, even though they don't run other AP schools.
Thank you, Tim. Councillor Rooney.
Just wondering, it's provoked by what Andrew just said. Is there any way where if I, as a member of a school governing body, or simply as a parent of a child of a school that was considering becoming or joining a multi-academy trust, could find how the schools in that multi-academy trust were rated in the latest Ofsted inspections? Because I think that would be helpful if we got a record of that somewhere.
Andrew, do you want to come in?
Yeah, so there's two websites, one which are both hosted by the DFE. So one is called, I type in as G I A S, but it means Get Information About Schools. So if you type in Get Information About Schools, it will take you to a website where you can look up either schools individually or in their multi-academy trust groups. And that gives you some information about the schools, the governance arrangements, and so on and so forth. And I think there's a link on that, but there are also there are separate DFE performance tables where for schools that are eligible to publish their attainment and exam data, that that's mainly, and again, that can be searched, councillor Rooney, via multi-academy trusts. In other words, you can actually actively click on a multi-academy trust, and it'll bring up all the schools that are in that multi-academy trust. So a member of the public can actually search and actually look at what the comparative performance is for those schools in that trust.
It's useful to know that. I didn't know that. But if, you know, at least it's there if you look for it.
Thank you. So any more questions or comments on this report? Councillor Whitaker.
Just a quick question. We've talked about the areas of need have been identified as being the north and the east of the city. As part of the bidding process, have the council had to specify a specific site? Or they have, yeah? Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so this report, excuse me, requires approval. The recommendations are to approve the local authority, that the local authority will support the submission of two bids for the alternative provision free school by Brigantea and Minerva respectively, and endorse the principle of funding by abnormal site costs resulting from a successful bid for the high-needs capital allocation. Are we all in agreement? Thank you. Can we record that we all agree? Thank you. And now on to item number 13, which is page number 119 of your pack. And this is the Regulation and Ofsted Inspection of Supported Accommodation for 16 and 17 Year Olds in Care. And Jo, that's coming to present, thank you.
Jo Horrigan, Director of Integrated Commissioning, Bill. And I'm covering for Victoria Gibbs, who is our Head of Commissioning for Children's. She's not able to attend today. So the purpose of this report is just to provide a briefing, rather than to seek any approval, a briefing on the proposals for the future regulation and inspection of supported accommodation for 16 and 17-year-olds, where the local authority has a duty to accommodate or arrange that accommodation. I think we've had some conversation previously at the committee about this. The Department for Education has undertaken a consultation recently on the guide to supported accommodation regulations, including quality standards. And that concluded, well, 16th of January. The new regulation will mean that Ofsted start registering providers of supported accommodation for children and people of that age, 16, 17-year-olds, ahead of the standards actually becoming mandatory in the autumn of this year. And at that point, all providers will need to be registered if they wish to continue providing accommodation, supported accommodation for 16 and 17-year-olds. And the first full inspections are then expected to begin from April 2024. We are preparing already and have been for some time for the introduction of this inspection framework, this regulation. We absolutely support it. It is the right thing that supported accommodation for this age group is properly scrutinised as residential is and provision for younger children as well. So we really, we welcome this. And we have been working with our supported accommodation providers in order to make sure that they are as ready as possible, that they're anticipating what the implications are for them, and that we have the earliest possible indication if any of them are planning not to put themselves forward to register for this kind of provision. The feedback we're getting from our providers that we work with at the moment is that they will be. We're not too anxious at this stage that they won't be putting themselves forwards. And we are going to be working with them on making sure that they are as ready as possible for the inspection regime when that starts next year. They'll be expected to ensure that all settings deliver a service that realises the principles that are set out in the report. I think these are really helpful I-statements that we use in other contexts as well. And there are a number of quality standards, particularly the leadership management standard, the protection standard, the accommodation standard, and the support standard. We are, and there's a breakdown of what each of those encompasses within the briefing. We're working very closely, as I say, with providers to ensure that they are as inspection-ready as possible. And as I say, we welcome all those areas really, as really important indicators of the quality of provision. So I'll stop there and take any questions that anybody has on this.
So I have a question, councillor Ross.
Just a comment, I'll just echo your thoughts. It's essential that it's sort of regulated. I know we probably all had casework where young people have been put into unsuitable and unsupported accommodation and caused problems with neighbours or what have you. So do support this recommendation. I know the consultation has ended now, and I know it's DFE, but are there any hints about any issues that were raised during the consultation?
I'm not aware of there being a huge amount of pushback. I think probably the question that some providers will have is, well, how much will this cost me? And that's why we're engaging now with our providers and have been for the last month or so on this, to begin to understand whether there are any barriers or challenges that will be an issue for them. But I actually think largely the market has received this well, because it is clearly the right thing to do. So, yeah, no major issues have been raised that I'm aware of. And if I discover that I'm wrong on that, I will bring that back to members.
Thank you. Councillor Rooney.
Could I ask what regulatory framework covers university students' accommodation?
You can ask me, and it's a perfectly good question. I'm afraid my brief doesn't stretch quite that far, but I will take that question back and speak to people much more qualified than myself, namely, probably Janet Sharp, the Director of Housing, who I'm sure can probably answer that question. I think there is, there are, it will fall under, I think, fairly standard housing rules and regs, and there may be some planning-related requirements as well within individual cities.
I was thinking simply because some of the structures that are being built now are beyond, over and above just, you know, a roof over your head. There's sort of other stuff that goes with it, isn't there? Allegedly support. And I was just wondering if that was covered by this legislation.
I think the short answer is no, it isn't covered by this legislation.
Thank you, Jo. I think we've, again, there aren't as many questions, because we have discussed this quite intensely within our committee meetings. Councillor Ross will bring you in in a second. Thank you. I think it is commendable that we do this. It's absolutely imperative that our looks after children that go into supported living continue to get a high quality of accommodation and support, and to make sure that. I am sure and have been reassured that we have oversight of it currently through our own systems. I think this is just built and braces for us. But what I've, and I'll ask you again in public, what would we do if one of the settings failed their inspection? What are we going to do about sufficiency and placing our young people swiftly into appropriate accommodation? What is our plan B?
So I will do my best to answer this, and this is an answer that my children really hate me giving, but it depends on the needs of those children and young people. And I'm sure colleagues from children and families can correct me if I'm wrong, but actually we would have to look at the needs of each child in that setting and understand what was the best way forward for that child, what the other options are. Our role in commissioning is absolutely about ensuring that we are developing the right kind of market so that we have alternatives, and that we are signalling clearly to the market or prospective market in the city so that they know what kind of provision we're going to welcome. And that's something which we are increasingly committed grips with in integrated commissioning, working really closely with Becky and other colleagues in children and families. So we would need to look at the individual situation, but our role is to ensure, from a commissioning perspective, that we are, but if we don't already have it, that we are building the right kind of sufficiency in the right places in the city, and that makes us then less reliant on providers out of city or providers who we would rather not place with. So, yeah.
All right, I'm going to just extend this slightly. I'm thinking, because this is like an Ofsted sort of situation, isn't it? If a school seems to be failing, we wouldn't move all the children out of the school and find them another school place. Would this be the case that we wouldn't have to move the children from the setting but would put in measures within the setting to ensure that standards were made? I'm just mindful that some of these are private providers, and I don't want us to have to be moving children around Sheffield due to failure in provision.
No, what we would do in that circumstance is we would look at what the concerns were, and we would put in an action plan and be a really clear action plan. There are some times when we do have to move children because we're not satisfied that the action plan is up to the standard that we would expect for our children. But in the majority of circumstances, we would come up with a very clear action plan, which will be monitored through our placements team, through our commissioning, and through additional visiting from social workers, health, education colleagues.
Thank you. Councillor Homsho.
Yeah, we have looked over this substantially over the past few weeks, so I'm aware of that. One thing that's just struck me here is on 4.42, which is about...
One thing that's just struck me here is on 4.42, which is about the climate implications. And it, that just seems a bit weak to say environmentally friendly. It doesn't sound very strong. Can we strengthen that? Can we sharpen it a bit? Because we're not going to reach carbon zero with that kind of slightly woolly kind of approach to it. Is there anything we can do in that?
Thank you. And I, I, I think that's a fair criticism. And I will undertake to discuss that with Will Stewart, who is our Director on all matters climate and other things, I should say. I can't remember his exact job title. I will speak to him however. And actually, I think there is a more concise form of words that we can put in here. And it's a conversation that I'll pick up with colleagues in, in commercial services as well in terms of what we can and can't prescribe within our commissioning and procurement processes. And, you know, how, how we get that tone right for future.
I'd love to hear the, I'd love to hear the results of that conversation as well. Because I'm, I'm quite keen on transferring this kind of information and request across other committees as well.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Yeah, it's just, just come to my mind this one. We've recently had a planning application in my ward for a three bedded children's home. It's on a, a site that's environmentally poor. We've not commissioned it because I did check when I was looking at the planning application. Who has oversight of that home? I don't know where the children are going to come from. I don't know what ages they're going to be. They're going to have 24 hour care. So who, who takes charge?
So that's, that's another really good question. My preference is that where we have children placed within the city, whether they are Sheffield children or placed as an external placement by another authority, that we endeavour to have oversight and as a minimum to make contact and have contact with the commissioning authorities or the placing authority so that we are sharing intelligence. And certainly, since we have recruited to Victoria's role, which is the Head of Children's Commissioning, that's something that we are looking at strengthening is our intelligence sharing across local authorities so that we can provide intelligence, you know, to one another about any concerns we have with providers. So once we are aware of providers, because there isn't anything that as commissioners we can do to prevent a provider popping up, we are sometimes asked by planning whether we would, this is something that we are actively supporting, that we have, you know, encouraged to the city. And I think the more, the more involved commissioning are in that space, the more we will pick up and get those kind of questions asked. However, once we know who that provider is, you know, we will make some inquiries and we will do a degree of due diligence and we will look out for who's placed within the city. It remains the responsibility of the placing authority, as I understand it. But good commissioning practice for me, for my service will mean that we will be interested in what happens to children in our city, whether or not they are Sheffield placed children because they are here on our, you know, in our city.
Okay, well, I'll keep you informed about this.
Thank you. So this paper was to be noted, so thank you very much for coming along and giving us that information today. Item number 14 then is corporate parenting strategy. And it says Paul, but nobody looks like Paul in this room, so I'm assuming it's Vicky.
Yes, yeah, it is. So I'm Beckett Hall, Assistant Director from Children's Services. Hello, it's just a brief update really, that the, the corporate parenting strategy is due for renewal in the spring. And I know that Sally is very keen to, to make sure that, that we're all sort of fully on board with, with what corporate parenting is. And I know has offered and is offering to, to come, to do sessions with members and officers so that she can involve everybody from across all parties and across all the committees to ensure that everybody's aware of what corporate parenting is. And if you'd like her to do that, she's, she's very willing to do that and she's ready to.
Yeah, thank you. We have discussed this quite in depth as well, particularly through Corporate Parenting Board, that the strategy is up for renewal and we will be working across the council to write our new strategy, taking into account the new committee system as well. So ensuring that members from all committees are involved in the development and delivery of the corporate parenting strategy because it affects all of us and we are all corporate parents. So we've just had a conversation about housing standards, we've just had a conversation about schools, we need to have conversations about green spaces and leisure because all of that does impact on our children. So when we're looking at policy and making decisions across the council, so we will be working with Sally and Becky to put on some workshops for any members across the council and officers that are interested in getting involved. So does anybody have any questions on that or are we happy to just note that? Thank you. Thank you, Becky. Well, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Bang on four o'clock. We're all chaired, I must say so myself. So thank you everyone for coming this afternoon. The next meeting of our Education, Children and Families Policy Committee will be held on the 8th of March at 10am. It's a funny time, we normally do afternoon starts. Yeah, so thank you everyone. Has anybody got any other business before I, Peter?
Two items I'd like to raise, if that's okay. One, I was wanting to raise concerns about what happened in Hove with migrant children going missing, being picked up by et cetera. And wanted to know, wanted to have some reassurance that that wasn't happening and couldn't happen in Sheffield. That's the first one.
Thank you, Peter. I've had a question regarding this from members of the public. And I have asked the Director Sally Williams to find out that information for me. She's not here today. She was going to be bringing that information with regards to. Becky, have you got the answers? No. Okay, the question specifically that I was asked was whether or not we have got any asylum seeker children currently missing in Sheffield. What we did ask for was a specific question around that because that could be a very broad question with regards to, when, my understanding is, and shoot me down if I'm wrong, when younger asylum seeker children come to the city, they become looked after children. At which point, when they become looked after, as we know from Corporate Parenting Board, sometimes if children are late home, they can be counted as a, as a, as a missing child, but they're not actually missing. And I think because this is around the issue around Hove and around children going missing and then the Home Office becoming involved and have we got anything like that? Or do we need to bring that question back?
As far as I'm aware, we haven't got anything like that. So as, as you've, you're absolutely correct in, in saying that they become looked after. And if they then are missing for the late home for tea or whatever, we've got all that protocol as we do for all of our looked after children. As far as I'm aware, we haven't got any missing children where we don't know where, you know, they don't know where they are. But I will double check that and get back to you today.
Thank you. You all right with that, Counselor Garbutt? As of last week, when I asked the question, no, we didn't have any missing asylum seeker children in Sheffield. But we will get that in a written reply if that's okay.
Thanks very much. The other question is around the Ofsted of King Teds. And I wondered if we could have a briefing about that at some stage because I've had quite a lot of interaction from parents about that. And I think there are some reassurances that I'd like to have around that.
Thank you. Andrew.
Yeah, we'd be happy to provide a briefing and in particular, I think a briefing and a discussion and conversation, I think is, is, is more appropriate, isn't it? About that. Clearly, it's very difficult for the school at the moment and we continue to provide support. I was there myself last Friday to have a conversation with the school, but we're still going to provide a briefing for members, yeah.
Can we mean it that, that we're going to be having a briefing? Thank you. Counselor Homeshaw.
Yeah, on that, would it be possible for us to have a written briefing on this, actually something on paper? The reason I'm asking for this is that there is a process here which I'm, which needs to be followed and I need to be aware of it. So I'm asking for a written process.
I was off the mind that Andrew had sent that out to you yesterday. I thought that was sent to you yesterday, a written briefing from Andrew.
No. I can, I can check right now.
So this was just a, not a, not in the format of a committee paper, but yesterday we sent out a briefing note and I'll double check on my emails and make sure you've got it.
I don't want a great long paper. I just wanted a kind of summary of the process.
It was quite a long summary, so I'll make sure, I'll make sure you, make sure it did come to you. Yeah, Counselor Rooney.
This briefing, will it be as a full committee meeting? No?
No, I would, I would propose that we have it as a, as a workshop style for all members that wish to attend as a closed briefing.
Will someone from the school, a senior member of staff and a senior member of the governing body be there as well to answer questions?
We could invite them. Yeah, we could invite them. And we'd have that in closed session, I think, because of the sensitivity to some of the issues that have been raised. But yeah, so can we arrange that then please as a closed session? Thank you. Thank you. So anything else or am I okay to close this meeting? I'd just like to thank all of the offices for all of your reports and coming in and speaking with us today. And thank you to members for your great questions. Thank you.